All right, good evening. Welcome to our fifth annual Meet the Board of Education Candidates Forum. I would like to start by introducing our Government Relations Chair for the East Brunswick Education Association, Chris Finnegan, who will lead us in the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chris. We are thrilled to be hosting this event again for the fifth time. This event is sponsored by the New Jersey Education Association Pride in Public Education Grant. We have sponsored hundreds of grants over the past 10, 12 years, ranging from the VFW 5K Run to the Superintendent's State of the District Address to our gingerbread contest that we give out every year in December. We are very grateful to the Parks and Recreation Department and for the use of the Community Arts Center, and I want to extend a very warm thank you to Adam Neary, the Executive Producer and Vice President of Playhouse 22 for supporting our needs here tonight. And I'm asking you to please visit the Playhouse 22 table out in the lobby and support this wonderful institution. The next show starts November 4th. Also, I'd like to thank Dave Ambrosi, Manager of EBTV and his crew for filming the event tonight. This will be airing on EBTV and the schedule is in the program that you received. The event is also airing live right now on the East Brunswick Education Association Facebook page. A huge thanks to the EBA Office Manager, Janine Morena, who put the program together and helped organize this event tonight, and thanks to all of our EBA volunteers that came out to assist. Now, the most important part, our five guests of honor tonight running for the Board of Education to fill three seats. They are sitting on the stage in ballot order. The first is Mark Sizmar. Second is Joseph Schmidt. Third is Alex Spielman. Fourth is Lee Woo Hong. And fifth is Heather Gwass. We want to thank the community members that wrote literally dozens and dozens and dozens of questions for tonight. We only have so much time, so we did our best, believe it or not. A lot of the questions were very similar, so we were able to kind of put a lot of them together. And our moderator for this evening is Mary Beth Biker. Mary Beth? And, thank you. Mary Beth is the Associate Director for Government Relations for the New Jersey Education Association, so thank you very much for assisting us tonight, Mary Beth. So at this point, we're going to get started. We did a selection at the beginning to see who will actually start first for the questions, and that will be Lee Woo. But we're going to start off by giving each of the candidates a minute and a half just to do an introduction about themselves before we start the questions. If you haven't already, I'm going to ask that you please silence your cellphone so that we have uninterrupted time tonight and can really focus on our candidates. Once again, thank you so much, and I hope you find this informative. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Good evening, and thank you, EBEA, for hosting this very important event and this wonderful resource for the East Brunswick community. As Dana said, we're going to start the evening with Mr. Hong. He's going to give us an introductory statement, so please tell us about yourself and your vision.
First, I want to thank Dr. Zambicki and EBEA for this good opportunity to meet East Brunswick voters. Thank you guys very much for showing up. I'm a father of three lovely children who are proudly memorial elementary schools, of course, and I'm a taxpayer for East Brunswick for 14 years. I'm a devoted public servant and volunteering multiple organizations, including East Brunswick Board of Education for the last six years. And I was appointed by New Jersey Supreme Court to the District Educators Committee. My job is to investigate any ethical violation against Middlesex County lawyers and judges, which is extremely important to keep our public faith in our judicial system. Professionally, I was a scientist for transcell technology in Princeton and MOC for 16 years. And after that, I was licensed to practice law in New Jersey, New York, Federal District Appellacord. So for the best of the interest of East Brunswick students and East Brunswick community, I decided to run this campaign again for the opportunities to serve East Brunswick children for three more years.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hong. And Ms. Gwass, if you could please tell us about yourself and your vision.
Good evening. My name is Heather Gwass, and I am proud to be a member of the East Brunswick Board of Education and its current Vice President. I would like to share a little of who I am, why I do this, and what I hope to achieve. I am the mother of three extraordinary children. I'm a teacher for 31 years in the New Jersey public schools. I'm a special educator, which you can never stop, and currently an English teacher, and most of all, I am a learner. I get somewhat mocked for wanting to tell what I learned at school each day at home, but I've learned from my students every single day. I'm also excited to be a part of this board. So why do this? I've always been interested in educational leadership. I was well into my doctoral program for just that when I started my family and had to pause. I was volunteering in the community where I worked, and I realized I should serve at home. This has been the most profound experience. I've met and talked with so many administrators, principals, teachers, parents, students, security officers, coaches, and it is such an opportunity to see what you may not get to see. So let me share. These schools are amazing. They are amazing because of the people in them. I do this to help those people do what they do best. If we as a board can support them, then I'm proud. So what do I want to do? In the next three years, I would like to focus on student concerns, respect for each other, respect for themselves, student safety, student mental health. These all weave together. Students should feel that this is for them. And my second focus is, of course, the high school. I hope to see a facility created to match the excellence that's happening within it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sizmar.
Good evening. I'm Mark Sizmar, and I hope that I can rely on your vote to reelect me to the Board of Education. My thanks goes out to the EBEA Pride Committee for hosting this important event. People move to East Brunswick because of the great schools and to be safe. Without safe schools, effective learning cannot happen. Safety and security is where my expertise helps to make our district successful. Our district had an important turning point four years ago when I came onto the board. Security in our schools was good, but was missing some important pieces. I saw the need to start a new committee dedicated solely to keep our district safe. That's when I suggested and we implemented the Security Committee, which I chair since. I saw the need for armed security officers in every school, every day. Passports were hesitant to have armed security. I was the catalyst to finally get board approval to work with Mr. Natalicio, retired law enforcement officers, to bring our security to the outstanding level that it is today. Our district is safer because of my contributions. I'm a man of action, not just talk. I have a proven record of keeping our district, your children, safe. I will continue my efforts to keep the students, staff, parents, and visitors safe with your help by voting for me, Mark Sizmar, November 8th. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt.
My name is Joseph Schmidt. I have Tret syndrome, so I have facial tics, just so you're aware while I'm speaking here. I also am, growing up, I was told that I would never be involved in politics because of the Tret syndrome, so this is, I never expected to be public speaking. I'm not particularly good at it, so I apologize if I don't do as great of a job. I'm much better on one-on-one basis. A community that has strong schools with children who grow up to be adults who live in the community, who have the ability to think for themselves and have different opinions and discuss things in a friendly manner, is extremely important for any community. And in Jewish, in Jewish culture, for thousands of years, whenever they move to a new area, one of the first buildings they build is a school, which the whole community takes care of because it's important for the whole community. That's pretty much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Spielman.
Well, thank you very much for the EBEA Pride Committee inviting us. Thank you to everybody here who is here watching in person, online, or in a future recording. My name is Alexander Spielman, and one of the reasons why I have decided to do these things, to run, is because I have been in this community for well over 20 years. I graduated from East Brunswick High School in 2011. I started in 4th grade at Irwin. My two brothers and one sister also have gone through the schools through kindergarten and graduated through here. And so it was natural for me to want to give back to a community that I have gotten so much from, and most certainly the school systems, especially the special ed departments, which I went through the entire time. Since I was six years old, I've been to deal with those, dealing with the different difficulties that have to do with it, and hopefully that I will be able to provide a viewpoint on certain things that may not be well flushed out, or at least not seen through a traditional lens such as regular practice. One of my major concerns has to do with the major construction that we're doing right now and all the things that have happened after the pandemic. I hope what we're doing is that we're going to be, my hope is that we can do this stuff in the most cost-effective and most effective way for all family and children that are part of this.
Thank you very much. All right, so we're going to go on to our first question, and Ms. Gwass, we're going to start with you. So can you please let us know, how does your education and experience make you best suited to make decisions for the East Brunswick public school system? Which committee would you most like to serve on, or do you think you are most qualified to serve on and why?
Okay. Wow, that's a lot. As far as my education to apply to this, I have a master's degree in special education, substantially into a doctorate in educational administration. I come from a long line of educators. This is what I was actually told not to do, but what I just could not resist. It's a work of my heart. I started in East Brunswick with 11 years at the Daisy Recreation Program, and that was actually what led me into education. I could not resist the children there, and it has become a lifelong calling. As far as committees, it's interesting, because when I first joined the board, I felt that I was really just so well-suited to student services or the curriculum committee, because in my job, I write curriculum, and so this seemed just like such an obvious fit. And I was told that that might not be the best thing, that the committees give us an opportunity to learn about everything that's happening in the district. And I have enjoyed being a part of the committees that have taught me more about finance, about technology. I work in a school, so school safety has always been a huge concern to me. But truthfully, I think that the board members belong on every single one of these committees, because if we're going to have to vote on all of these issues, we need insight into all of it. Thank you.
Mr. Sizmar, if anyone needs me to repeat the question, I'm happy to do that when it's your turn, and we won't take any time off.
Yes, please.
Sure.
Thank you.
So how does your education and experience make you best suited to make decisions for the East Brunswick public school system? Which committee would you most like to serve on, or do you feel that you are most qualified to serve on and why?
Thank you. As I stated in the program, when I went back to college at the age of 40, I credit that to the East Brunswick school system, being born and raised here, K through 12 is where I was educated, for a 40-year-old to step into a classroom and get their bachelor's degree in sociology and criminal justice and follow up with a master's in human resources training and development. Again, I give credit to the foundation I got here in East Brunswick. During the 90s, for over seven years, I was in the elementary school system, actually teaching the DARE program in schools every day, hand in hand with teachers. Awesome experience for my knowledge of elementary education. After being a police officer for 26 years, I've been in three different school districts for security. East Brunswick for five years, which I left to get on the Board of Education, it's a conflict of interest. Olbridge for three years, and now I started a new armed security program down in the Spotswood School District. Which committee, if I had to take a stab in the dark, I'd say security. You know, I don't want people, and I've said what I said in the beginning about my qualities for security, but I'm not a one-trick pony. I'm very educated, and like I said, I give all that credit to being an East Brunswick student for my entire educational life prior to college. So thank you, EBE, and I love giving back to the town that made me. So thank you.
Great, thank you. Ms. Schmidt.
There's an old saying that a jack of all trades and a master of none, that, but you can learn a lot of stuff, but not everything in detail. But there is an aspect of it that if you know a lot of different things, then you can at least try to figure out onto one specific subject what is going on and how to figure it out through life experience and learning through reading and other factors, education. I usually, I learn quite a bit, and I get called on at least in my business many times because people can't figure out what's wrong, and I can analyze and figure out what's going on and how to try to solve the problem that they're having in their house. That's a sort of skill that although it's a different type of thing to do, it's the same kind of aspect of being able to analyze and figure things out.
Okay. Thank you. And Mr. Spielman.
Can you repeat the question again?
Sure, happy to. How does your education and experience make you best suited to make decisions for the East Brunswick public school system? Which committee would you most like to serve on, or do you think you are most qualified to serve on and why?
Okay, so my experience in education, I actually, so I graduated from East Brunswick High in 2011. I actually went to Middlesex County College and actually had my degree as an educational practitioner. And through that experience, I was actually able to do my in-class instruction at Frost Elementary. And I was able to understand how the school operates, not just as a student, but also as an educator, and how those are two completely different worlds, being the teacher versus the student. And understanding that all these different things come together makes the different schools how they are. I think that the experience with doing that has given me a perspective that is not common for most people if they aren't educators or they weren't students. So there's that interesting best of both worlds in that scenario. As for committees, the one I would most interested to be part of, or one I might be best suited for, would probably be student services or curriculum. And the main reason why for those two was, well, student services, obviously, because that's part of the special ed department, I was part of that, and I think I would bring some different insight to that that a person with special needs would have. And curriculum, because one of the things I really like doing is researching. I like to understand what things are happening and how they work. So when it comes to a curriculum, what things work and how do they put together in order to make the most synergistic blend of everything that comes together? So thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Hong.
I have too many degrees. I have two master of science degrees. Master of Science in organic chemistry, one master of science in polymer chemistry, and I have two doctor degrees. So professionally, I worked as a scientist for Sharon Plow-Moore combined for almost 16 years. After that, I went to law school, got my JD, and I was licensed to practice in New Jersey, New York, and federal. So that has been 16 years. So in my profession, I have been actively defending all kinds of juvenile case, matrimonial case, criminal case, which provide me the understanding how our young children and their family. So my combined experience, education background, and experience as a scientist, as an inventor, and a litigation attorney, and a business owner, and a volunteer for all social organizations, which provide me the ability, the skill for all committee. So I'm ready and I'm able for all committees. I'm willing to serve any committee which is needed, which is assigned to me for the Board of Education. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, and on to question two. So we're going to start with you, Mr. Sizmar. From teachers to ESPs to bus drivers, East Brunswick has been dealing with seemingly unprecedented staff shortages that are negatively impacting our students, our staff, our parents. If elected, what steps would you take to address these shortages and adequately staff all positions?
One of the things that comes up is privatization. I think it has its place in certain things, but I'm going to talk about busing for a minute here. If you've met our bus drivers that actually work for the district, they are amazing. I had an encounter with one the other day. I don't want to embarrass them by saying it out loud, but they were our employees. It's one of the things where we trust our children every day on a bus, and I'm not badmouthing the good employees out there that are private contractors, but that's where we ran into problems this year, was contracts not being fulfilled. Promises weren't fulfilled. But you know who showed up every day? Our East Brunswick employees. So one thing I would do is try to increase, and we've talked about that, trying to buy more buses, get more employees that actually work for the district. That's something that takes a big investment in the beginning, but it pays many dividends in the end. So the more employees we can get that are actually full-time East Brunswick employees, whether it's support staff, bus drivers, custodians, I think the better we are as a district. They're people that give their entire career to our district, and I think they truly care more about our children than people that come from privatization. So I thank you to our employees in the district.
Terrific. Mr. Schmidt.
I was listening to Mr. Sizmar's answer, and it seems like a very good answer to me. I'm not supposed to have my own answer, but he said it very well. I know Sayerville had a private bus company, and they switched back to hiring their own people. And I heard from people in Sayerville, because it didn't work out for similar reasons that was mentioned by Mr. Sizmar. So that's pretty much.
Okay. Anything you want to elaborate on, or are you ready to move on?
Oh, you mean the other aspects? In the sense of other employees that are, there is employee shortage in general within the United States. Part of it is to try to figure out, there are certain things we can't control and certain things we might be able to control, to figure out how to go and get people to want to come to it. There's a certain supply and demand equilibrium that happens with economics that is, so you have to figure out how much you pay the employee, but also if you pay too, it's a complicated aspect.
Okay. All right, thank you. Just going to give applause here. Mr. Spielman, we're up to you.
Pardon me. So a lot of our issues that we're dealing with right now when it comes to transportation, my personal perspective on this is that I think we were doing too much at one time. With the major changes that we've done when it came to changing the times of the starts of the school, starting the construction of the TCUs, and putting a lot of those things together on top of us just coming out of the pandemic, I think it was kind of like having a runner who was ill and having them to run a marathon while at the same time they were just informed the next previous day. And so I think we're jumping from zero to 100 too quickly. One of the things I was considering maybe doing was that we roll back some of those things, such as the times, because some of those buses that we were dealing with, one of the reasons why some of these people are having issues is because their contracts that they have with other schools were, came in conflict with ours. And so that was one of the reasons why they were not being able to fill those things. But considering what we have at this moment, we have to go forward. So I think the best way we can do this stuff is, once again, bring incentives to privatization if they care to do so and they're able to do so. Definitely strongly understand that they have an obligation and that they do not follow it, that we have to follow through on, you know, dealing with them thoughtfully. But definitely, we also need to consider the public school systems, buses from our East Brunswick Transportation Department, and that they are our highest priority when it comes to these things, because they deal with the lion's share of everything that's happening within their schools.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hong.
So, public school is a service, it's not for benefit. So I am in favor of have our own employee, including bus drivers. At the very beginning of this school term, so one night before the school start, we got many calls from contractors that says five or six hour bus driver will now show up. Even we building a class, violation class in the contract, still that will now solve our students' problem. The litigation to make them responsible may take months, even years. So that's why I prefer to have our own bus. An employee work for an organization which he or she belongs will make him, make her be part of the organization. The working altitude will be very different. So every day when I see my boys on to school bus, the bus driver always says, "Good morning. Back up, everybody sit down, let's go." So it's all, because she is the driver, she's part of our school district. So that's, when I was the Transportation Committee Chair several years ago, I started advocate to add more school bus. But, you know, I believe our administration team is working it. I believe they will add more school bus, will hire more employees, because everyone want work for the organization, he or she belongs to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gwass, are you okay?
I'm hoping.
Okay. Do you need me to repeat the question?
If you could, please.
Sure. So from teachers to ESPs to bus drivers, East Brunswick has been dealing with seemingly unprecedented staff shortages that are negatively impacting our students, parents, and staff. If elected, what steps would you take to address this shortage and adequately staff all positions?
Well, I'd like to apologize for the coughing. Today was my first day to try to go back to work with a sinus infection, but we're negative for everything else. I just have this cough that I can't stop. The staff shortages have been impacting every school in the state, and I'm sure around the country. What East Brunswick is doing, we are actually doing very well. Other schools within the state are not seeing all of their classrooms fully staffed, not even close to what we've managed to achieve. Our administrative team, especially our human resources, have just outdone what everyone else has been able to do. I would also like to second what Mark has said, having our own bus drivers, where we've had to privatize, I understand, but having our own bus drivers has put us in a much stronger position than other districts have been able to. And education rises and falls on transportation. If you cannot get our children to school, we can't do anything else. Excuse me. As far as the other staff shortages, I think it's more making sure we don't overtax the teachers and the ESPs that we have left in the classrooms. It's going to be listening to them, what they need, and continuing staff development to make sure that more teachers don't feel the need to leave. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to move on to our next question, and Mr. Schmidt, we're going to start with you. What is your vision for dealing with the increasing student enrollment in our schools in both the short and long term? How do you feel about the district restructuring plan so far? And do you support building a new high school?
So with the increase of students, it's happening, and we are, things sometimes are out of control, things are out of control, so you have to figure out how to deal with things. So if there, I don't, the, with, you didn't have a certain ratio between teacher and student, and it actually has changed over generations, as far as I'm understanding. I was talking to some people from two parts of the, different parts of the country recently, who both the country recently, who both were teachers, and they mentioned that back in the, one was in the, back around the 60s or so, that they had class size about one for 30 people. I remember when I was a kid, back in the 90s when I was in high school, I think it was about one teacher per about 20 students. And then you also have special ed has been, unfortunately, a lot of kids, more and more kids need special ed than they have in the past. So the, the actual teacher staff is, has to be reanalyzed about how, reanalyzed about how to go and figure out to best do it for the children, and how to put classrooms in there. And I mean, I don't have particularly the exact numbers. I know that the board has done some research on it. I'd have to actually read the whole research on it in more detail to know more about it than just.
Do you support building a new high school?
I don't, if it's needed, then you need a new high school. I mean, I'd have, or you, maybe you could renovate and extend it. I know in the last years when we meet candidates, Winston had mentioned about, oh, your time up.
Your time is up, so we're gonna move on, but thank you. Mr. Spielman? I absolutely will. What is your vision for dealing with the increasing student enrollment in our schools and in both the short and long term? How do you feel about the district restructuring plan so far? And do you support building a new high school?
Well, I'm not too familiar with the long-term analytics right now when it comes to the amount of students coming in. But from what I do understand, we are a growing community, and that means we're gonna be having more students come in. That's gonna be equally true both long-term and short-term. So to have the best facilities possible, not just for a high school, but that means elementary, junior high, upper, upper elementary. And I think the best way going forward is realizing how our occupancy currently is with our different schools, whether that's Irwin, Val Monroe, Lawrence Brook, Hammerhill, Churchill, just understanding what their capacities are, and then allocating them to the current, I think it was, I was saying something about possibly being one to 20 or things like that. Looking at that and seeing how many students are in one classroom and seeing what is the best fit for that. As regard to a new high school, I think that we need a high, we need a way to give the best school education environment possible. That means possibly bringing in a new high school. The way they, I think that we're doing this may not be the proper way, but I do believe we need a new school. The high school itself is over 60 years old. I was there, it was 50 years old. It needs to, needs to be done, and we just can't do this Frankenstein's monster idea of just putting things together. We need a new facility so that we can put the ninth grade into the high school and have a four-year high school. But at the same time, we need to move everybody over at the same time, not this idea of moving in from one place and then changing things over.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hung?
So more and more families come to East Brunswick with young children. Why do they come to East Brunswick? They come here for school, for East Brunswick Public School. So that's, this is a reason I'm really proud of, because we are attracting new families, new students to this community. At the same time, the increase of the enrollment is causing problem. That's why I support the ideal reconstruction, restructuring of different grade level. And my answer, simple answer to the new high school is yes. For long, for short term, a new high school will solve our enrollment problem. For long term, that will help East Brunswick. Because the public school is East Brunswick's foundation, and with the township finishing the development, redevelopment, and public school, school district, build a new high school, then East Brunswick will be fair, the best place to live, to raise children in state of New Jersey. That's why for short term and long term, I support the idea. Additionally, I had the experience visiting class in high school during summer time. The room had no air conditioning. The temperature was so high, I saw students keep scratching their skin because it's too high. There's no way for those youngsters to focus on learning. So that's why a high school is must for public school, for the township.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Goss?
I would agree. We have seen such an increase in students, and I think sometimes where the confusion comes in in the community is that it's not that many students. We still have room in the high school. We still have room here. But our issue was, we had an increase in students at the elementary level. And at the elementary level, it makes such a difference, the student to T-shirt ratio. It makes such a difference if they have a space for art and music, or if those rooms are taken to put more classes into. One of the greatest predictors of student success is student to teacher ratio. So keeping class sizes where we have them should be of utmost importance. So this insurgence of students coming in, and like Mr. Hung said, we offer an education, our reputation is getting out there. It's obvious why people come. Many of the students that have come, have come with IEPs, and special education creates its own requirements, larger, larger spaces for fewer students. There's actually a law on that and code, and class sizes. So we're faced with these difficulties that created restructuring. I've had the pleasure of teaching in three high schools that were 50 to 60 years old, and I can say that while it does create camaraderie to overcome these difficulties, it's really very, very difficult. I think it's disrespectful to the taxpayers' money to continue to talk about additions and renovations. You're throwing good money onto a building that just needs to be rebuilt. What we have going on in the high school with the students and the staff is extraordinary, and the facility on the outside needs to match what they're doing inside of it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Sizmore, you're gonna follow up with, you're the last one for this question.
Yes, it's been said before, the increase of students has come mostly at the elementary level. But with that, we need current demographic reports to show the future trends. And I know the board has requested, and it is coming in the works right now to get the current reports. We need data to show that. If you also, if you talk to local real estate agents, it's families coming in. And again, we need to address that at the lowest level because that's a growth that's happening in the elementary schools. People don't leave East Brunswick, which is a good thing. They stay here. That is going to move up as we go through the years. Restructuring came out of necessity. We had limited classroom space, especially again, at the elementary level. So that was done out of necessity. But we still need a true assessment of class space and class size based on the type of class. You can't just take square footage in a district and say, well, you have 3,000 square feet, we can fit this many children in there. You need to look at the type of class. If it's a self-contained class with five students, it's a lot different than a science class with 30. New high school, yes. As others have said, it's an aging building. I've been here since 1964. It was before, I believe it was 1959 or so that it was built. Putting good money to bad is, is to me counterproductive at this point. People come here for the great schools. Let's give them a great high school. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Spielman, we're gonna start the next question with you. East Brunswick is a community that is strengthened by its great diversity and inclusiveness of all people regardless of race, ethnicity, religion, gender, sexual orientation, or gender identity. As a Board of Education member, what steps would you take to ensure that our schools are a welcome place for everyone so that we can support all students for their, to achieve their highest potential?
Well, there's a lot there. So I think the best way to do that is just to appreciate people for who they are. I think the problem that we've had within the last few years is that we have put these barriers that are there, whether it was a racial barrier, a orientation barrier, a religious barrier there. If you're not one of these things, then you don't belong. Well, I think that's not, I think that's an improper way. I think the best way to do this is to embrace all of these things together because that's what makes East Brunswick what it is. That's why people are coming to East Brunswick schools and coming to East Brunswick Township. It's because of the fact that we do not care about those things as a prerequisite. These things are things to be embraced, okay? Whether it is a religious holiday because we, we celebrate those things and we talk about those things in our schools, whether it's a cultural heritage, you know, right now we have Hispanic, Hispanic month right now, and it's, and I believe it's August 15th, September 15th, October 15th, excuse me. So that's another thing, you know, we have that there. I think all of these things need to be appreciated and, and definitely brought through. I mean, one of the things I would like to see us do is like, especially when it came to our cafeteria, is, you know, let's bring out culturally significant foods, whether it's, we can do a cultural, you know, something for like, we have Chinese New Year, something for Chinese or something like that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Hung?
So I'm, one of the reason I'm proud of East Brunswick residents is that diversity. We celebrate everyone's holiday, like East Brunswick is holiday town. I enjoy this kind of environment. As for school, we not only just teach student to accept each other, we need to teach our children respect each other, appreciate each other, because everyone come different background, with different color, different hairstyle, but we are equal. So that's why, you know, I really enjoy it, and I will, I help every student in our school district, every residents in this township are respected and appreciated. That's all for this.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Hout, Goss. Could you read the question again? Sure. East Brunswick is a community that is strengthened by its great diversity and inclusiveness of all people regardless of race, ethnicity, religion, gender, sexual orientation, or gender identity. As a Board of Education member, what steps would you take to ensure that our schools are welcoming, a welcoming place for everyone so that we can support all students to reach their highest potential?
Well, I have to say, our demographic is changing, and I actually am so grateful for that, truthfully. I grew up in Milltown next to us, and my children often ask why we don't live there. You know, I loved the house I grew up in. It's such a nice community. And I said, because I would rather live in a place that's more diverse. I want you to grow up around all kinds of people, understand the world more. We came here for that. My youngest is a minority, and I was a little concerned when she was born, but I've been watching the numbers, and our minority representation is growing, and I am grateful to see it. I think where the school needs to meet the students is in the curriculum. I think that the curriculum needs to reflect who our students are, who their families are, and they need to see themselves in their learning. I've been part of a curriculum development committee where I work for the past several years, and it has made such a difference to students to see themselves in the novels that are being taught, in authors that look like them, in characters that look like them, in families, where that's not the primary problem. It's just the fact, this book has people in it just like me. I think that we're strengthened by our diversity, and obviously I chose to live here specifically for it, the education and the diversity. We just need to keep reinforcing to all our students that they each belong in these classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Sizmore?
Thank you. Like I said, I've been here since 1964, and yes, I've seen diversity grow here, and I embrace it. Look around town. I think there are more different houses of worship in East Brunswick Township than probably any town that I know of our size. What would I do to continue with that? Let's, let's continue the course and support our administration. We were just given a report from Dr. Figaroa about a student services self-assessment, and it was a 78. And now you're saying, well, that's like a C+. No, it's 78 out of 78. What we're doing here is getting the top scores you can in every category in every school as far as what we're doing for the children. Again, being born and raised here, let me narrow it down to these two things, manners and respect. If we stress those things, and we stress that we are all East Brunswick, we are all bears, no matter what your race, religion, ethnicity, doesn't matter. We are all East Brunswick, and together we are, and we will continue to be, a great school district. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Schmidt?
One thing that's important for all the different groups in one place is that they have, people, they learn a lot from the adults, from their parents, and from teachers, from other adults they see in the community as an example for the children. And children will see adults getting into cliques sometimes, that sort of thing, and sometimes it can cause problems. I have heard there's a bullying problem at, in East Brunswick. I don't know very much about it. I've just heard from some parents. I don't know why, but I'm very strongly believe in that people should care about each other, even if they're different than each other. And that we have to develop, make sure there's an atmosphere towards that, which sounds like from all of the other camps that they're trying to do also.
Anything you want to expand upon? Any steps you would particularly take? You have plenty of time left.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking.
Okay, it's fine. You can pass. I just wanted to let you know you had more time.
All right, thank you. It's fine.
Okay, sure. We'll move on. So our next question, we're back to the next round, and Mr. Hung, you're going to start this off. So across the nation, many discussions are occurring regarding the banning of books, the teaching of established and accepted scientific theories such as evolution and climate change, and whether and how to confront the more unpleasant aspects of American history. What are your thoughts about these discussions as they relate to East Brunswick schools? And who do you think is the best arbiter of what and how students are taught in our schools?
It's a very tough question. I think history is history. We learn from history. If we tried to ignore history, then we're not making any progress. We will make same mistake many years ago, human being made. So for all those issues, so we need learn from, hear from parents, from media to know what is happening in this country, and then we bring this topic to our curricular committee and evaluate those things, and then make sure, balance everyone's interest to decide if we bring new topic, new book, and to our curricular committee. That's why, as the curricular committee chairperson for three, past three years, we constantly evaluate new demands and new proposals, new books, to see if it's the right time to start a new topic and a new book. So that is the starting point. So if there is real need, we balance everyone's interest, we will start that topic.
Okay. So, so just to clarify, you think the curriculum committee would be the best to hear all voices?
Yes, that is the starting point. It's not the decision maker, but it's a starting point.
Starting point. Okay, thank you very much. And Ms. Goss?
Can you read that again?
Sure. Across the nation, many discussions are occurring regarding the banning of books, the teaching of established and accepted scientific theories such as evolution and climate change, and whether and how to confront the more unpleasant aspects of American history. What are your thoughts about the discussions and how they relate to East Brunswick schools? And who do you think is the best arbiter of what and how subjects are taught in our schools?
Banned books has been quite the topic, actually. In my classroom and in my life, we just finished banned book week, for anyone who's not sitting in an English classroom all the time. And this year has been unprecedented. This year continues on the same track that it's been going. Then 2022 is going to have the highest number of challenged and banned books in U.S. history in decades. So this is a contentious issue across the country. I truly believe the curriculum needs to reflect the people in the community, that most of the books that are being challenged and banned right now across the United States involve people of color and the LGBTQ plus community, and not as main focal points, just as they exist within the books and they're being challenged. But that doesn't really represent, banning books doesn't really represent our students. They all need to see themselves in the books that they read. Now, I believe the books need to be age-appropriate. I believe there's something to be said for adding books to the canon, the canon that we've always taught. But I think the curriculum committee, I think parents that come out to Board of Education meetings, I think the voices do need to be heard about what children, what makes it age-appropriate. And as far as evolution and climate change, I believe that the experts in the science fields in our science departments that we hire should be the leading voices in that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Sizmore?
Yes. First of all, let's start off with, don't get your information from social media on some of these subjects. Many times on some of these subjects. Many times, it's the agenda of the author of the post, not the whole true story, what's going on. If you want to learn what's going on in the schools, parents, look at the curriculum. It's online. If you can't find it, call our administration. Everybody gets a call back and your questions will be answered. I agree with the other two members down there. Curriculum committee is where new things come through. We shouldn't be banning books. And again, a lot of that hype is out there in the social media universe. It's not what's going on at the ground level. We have a curriculum committee with teachers, board members, and our experts, which are the administrators and teachers that we hire to go through curriculum. Yes, we start with the New Jersey State Learning Standards and that's where it's based for all of the core learning standards that we have to implement in the schools. But again, I agree with Mrs. Goss, at the local level, we can see what we need here. But again, if I want to narrow it down, yeah, the curriculum committee, that's the proper way to do it. Don't be putting posts on social media because I see a lot of stuff out there. People want to complain a lot, but they don't have a lot of solutions. They just want to complain. Come to board meetings, come to the curriculum meeting, call our administration, call Dr. Valeski, get the truth from the direct source. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Schmidt.
In 2019, there is a House, Congress House, House Representative hearing with Mark Zuckerberg about, about Libra and Co., but also about censorship and different aspects of that. And there were a lot of, it was about five hours, it was over five hours long. And sometimes I put on, listen to while working, I do construction stuff, work my hands, I put this stuff on, I listen to it, take a couple days sometimes, but it was quite interesting to find out that there are different people in Congress. There are over 500 people in Congress, right? So, you know, so there's a lot of people, but a lot of the people there just basically were saying that they want to, Mark Zuckerberg to control the other side. And it did, it, and some were more open, some were less open. But it's interesting because it wasn't one party or the other party. It was more, people just want him not to go in and talk about things that they didn't like, if that wasn't part of their narrative. And sometimes I wonder if that's, that's what's going on more with all of this discussion of book banning is that I, my father read Mein Kampf in, which is, anyone who knows Hitler wrote it, and I know that people have read it. And there are a lot of books out there, or some people argue, for example, Atlas Shrugged, which I haven't read, or Capital, which I haven't read, are kind of contradictory the way they see things. One's more libertarian, one's more of a socialism type aspect. And some of these books, you can read two different sides. They try to start a discussion about how things should be. Time's up.
Your time is up. We'll come back to you. You can put in your closing. And Mr. Spielman.
So this kind of goes with a personal mantra of mine, which is that the free flow of information is the, is the, the free flow of information is essential for preventing despotism. And that is especially true with our school district. I believe that the banning of books for unprecedented reasons is a very poor thing. But I also believe that books need to be age appropriate and they also should be providing the widest scope of information regardless of a personal, political, or social, or economic position on things. We need to talk about what's actually happening as it's happening. Like, for example, when we talk about climate change and things like that, that's a hot button topic. You have one side that says one thing and one side that says the other thing. I think we go down the middle, present both arguments at the same time and say, hey, make your decision on these things. Science has said this, but at the same time, science is also, is all about being critical about these things. So have your learning caps on and be able to investigate these things yourself. But at the same time, banning books will do that. It won't stem the, it will stop the ability to explore certain topics that may be considered taboo. But I think the ultimate arbiter with this is definitely going to be the curriculum committee, but at the very end, also the parents and community involvement is going to be a keystone in this.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. And Ms. Goss, we're going to start with you for our next question. What contributions do you believe education support professionals, ESPs, make to a student's success? And how will you work to protect these employees from privatization threats?
Well, as a special education teacher in a self-contained setting for 14 years, I couldn't have done any of that without the ESPs that I worked with. And I've continued on. The ESPs, ESPs are what get us moving in through the day with some, well, many of our students. They are beyond invaluable. And I think it's similar to our bus driver situation. If you want to have support professionals who are well-trained, who are capable, who understand our students, who understand our expectations here in East Brunswick and what we're trying to accomplish, then we need to try to keep them from within. I, I think that it's just about setting, setting our standards and our expectations. I think that privatization has had to happen in some places for financial reasons, to be conservative, but at the same time, the ESPs are so incredibly, incredibly important to the everyday student experience that I would hope to always keep them as our own. Thank you.
Any, any specific steps you would take to make sure that you were able to keep them? You have a few seconds left. I'm going to make sure you use your time.
I think it, it really does come down to financial in the end, but I do think that the ESPs, they get, if they're within-house, they get so much more training, they're so much more able to work with our students, they're so much more able to assist the teachers. They're just very necessary to be our own.
Thank you. And Mr. Sizmore.
Again, being in, in this school system and other school systems, it can't be said enough, the valuable asset that educational support professionals give to our children. As far as privatization, no way. I mean, children need the continuity of seeing the same familiar face every day. I mean, how would it be if, you know, one day this person's here, the next day that person's there, this person doesn't show up. I want, and I've said it before with privatization, I want employees that are in our district for their career. They put more into the job. I'm sorry, when somebody just shows up and, and they're just here for the day, there's no way they're putting in with, you know, the person that's been in the school 10, 15, 20 years. I could name my custodian from back in elementary school, Roselle Smith School. It's part of Churchill now. That's all another story. But they make an impression on you, people you see every day. How would I make some changes? The union may relish in this and the rest of my board members may not. I think they're, I think an increase in pay. Sorry, I have to say it, you know. I see what they make. And again, I'll probably get in trouble for saying this, but I really don't care. It's for what they do and the value we get out of them. If we could do something to help them, to help retain them as employees, I would be for that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt.
There are many different aspects of looking at what to do in the sense of subbing out to somebody else versus actually hiring an employee. And the value of them, I think, both the two previous speakers spoke very well about what, about value-wise keeping in that sense. But there's also in the sense of, of if you, let's say, go and hire out of subcontractors, then the overhead that the school has, they'll have to add it on plus the profits their separate business would have to go and do it. So it might not, it might not even be financially feasible to do it. It might be better to just do it yourself. I know that when my father went for Amtrak, he was working for consulting firm. And then when he started working directly for Amtrak, as I said, no longer any consultants, his salary went up because they weren't paying the consulting firm anymore. I mean, that's a...
Okay, so you, you do have some time. Would you give us a step that you would take to stop the threat of privatization or try to curb it?
Well, first question is, what is the threat of privatization? If the school board is the one that makes the decision, what's the threat? If everyone agrees. I don't know if there is a threat. I haven't heard them talk about privatizing it, but I haven't seen everything, every school board being, trying to.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Spielman.
Well, I wanted to mirror what Mr. Sizmore was saying about raises for custodians and other support staff of that nature. And definitely that because I, my mother actually worked for the Neshal Nutrition team before Aramark took over our nutrition. And from the conversations that she has told me, the times that she's been at the high school, a lot of them, they are overlooked. They do a hard job. They are the lifeblood of that school. Besides, besides the teacher, which are equally as important, we also need the ESPs there as well who are doing their own equally challenging and demanding task. And I think we need to treat them in kind. We can't treat them like they're some disposable thing that we can throw away. We have to treat them that we're part of our community and we're going to treat you as that. And I understand that may not be very popular without that, but you know, when it comes to the idea of the threat of privatization, competition, you know, if we're going to use competition, we're going to be showing that our schools are going to advocate for our support staff as much as anybody else. They are not going to be behind. And if I'm on that, if I'm on the board, I will be, I will advocate for those people as much as any other person there. They do get a seat at the table as much as a teacher or an administrator. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. All right, Mr. Hung.
The privatization happens every day on Wall Street. As I just said, public school is service, is not for benefit. Our target is to provide our children with the best education, prepare them well for their uncharted future. So I'm, I'm not in favor for the privatization for these ESPs. I want them become the employer of our school district. Let them feel the ownership of while they are working here. So, but people always says, oh, there's a challenge. Can you afford that, all those peoples? I, my idea is within our financial ability, I'm willing to keep and use all ESPs. Try not to privatize any of those services. Because those people working in, in our school district, they know they are okay. This is my job, my employer. So the attitude, the ownership makes them more efficient. And who benefit most is our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Well, everybody has plenty of time left over. So we're going to go into our next question. Mr. Sizmore, you're the lead in this one. If you are elected to serve on the school board in November of 2022, what are your top priorities for our district? How will you work to achieve those priorities?
My top priority every day, I've said it before and it's worth saying it in almost every question, is the safety of our district. You can't fall asleep at the wheel. You know, this is, this is a crazy world we live in, as we all know. My goals are for prevention of violence, prevention of things happening in our schools. If our children do not feel safe, if parents, if you don't feel safe sending your child to school, like I said before, learning does not happen. How I'll do that is what I've been doing since the four years I came on the board and five prior to that as an employee of the district, constantly focusing every day on how to improve, what to look at. With that though comes, you know, I don't see an unlimited budget for things too. I really do a true assessment of a building of what's going on, of an event, and apply things where needed and other things. There's, there's some frivolous stuff out there that people, they have a gimmick or something they want to try to sell you, and that's not the way to go. So that's where my focus is. I think, I think I've proven for the past four years how I'm going to do it. And with your support, I will continue to keep our district safe. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Schmidt.
The whole point of the school board is to mainly concentrate on the children as being the main focus of what we need to take, of what we have to concentrate on. But there are also many different aspects that have to be taken care of as well to do that and make contradictory aspects. And of course, there's not an unlimited budget and there's a whole bunch of factors involved. But in the sense of what is the main point is the children and everything else is peripheral to that. And there's, as I said, it is complicated because there are other aspects, like for example, that, like, let's say, budget is my example. You can't, you can't bankrupt the residents of East Brunswick, so you have to be able to put within a budget. You have to, you have to, there's other factors too. There's discussions about starting time and things like that for the kids, but then there's also other aspects of busing. There's, there's many different aspects that contradict and have to be worked out to get the general gestalt to sort of work for the kids. I don't know if I can, but I'm trying to very well, but.
Okay, you do have some time left. If you, if you're not ready, we'll move on.
I'm, I answered the question.
Good, okay. And Mr. Spielman.
Can you read that one time, please?
Sure. If you are elected to serve on the school board in November of 2022, what are your top priorities for our district? And how will you work to achieve those priorities?
I think some of my main priorities, if I'm elected, is to provide even more transparency to the schools as we already have. And so that we, you know, include the families of this community in a more, even more robust environment than they already have. With the concerns that we've had, security and things like that in schools in the late end years past, we also need to consider that, security of our schools, both inside, outside, and make sure that the children's well-being's are there. I think another priority I have at the same time is to provide a conduit from one place to another, you know. You know, a lot of people think that when it comes to any type of legislative position, whether it's school board or council or anything like that, that they're this ivory tower, right? We need to show that we are human and we are, be able to be relatable as much as anybody else. So that's one, another thing I want to do, is that I can want to be there as that conduit, you know. If you have a question, if you have a concern, come to me. I will be more than happy to discuss it and provide you with the necessary resources that you require. As if it's to refer you to an administrator, that would be one place. If you have another, another department, it's another thing. That's kind of where my ideas are at this point.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hung.
So every student's need is my priority. Just I'm having dealing with this in last six years. As for the top priorities, I agree with Mark, that safety, that safety is related to every single student, every single family, and almost entire East Brunswick community. That's why as, as a board member, in 2018, right after the Florida shooting that night, we passed a decision to arm X number of SOs. So if I'm elected, first, I will do so for any committees assigned to me or which is needed. I'm, how every student's need, of course, I will try my best to, to serve the, this security committee because again, that is the very fundamental for every family, for, for the community.
Okay. You, you also have time, just to let you know if you wanted to add anything?
No, I pass.
Okay, thank you. All right, and Ms. Goss.
I think my top priorities start with the students. I think that, as the others have said, students need to feel safe within our buildings. And parents need to feel that the students are safe when we send them off. I have three children in the district. And truthfully, when my, when my children have been in these school buildings, I feel very, very confident. It's an interesting thing to be on the board because we're privy to more information. And I have to say that there is, it is a great, great comfort to know the amount of security that's in place that can't be seen. But that needs, that can't be something that we sleep on. That needs to be a priority always. They also have to feel safe within the school with the relationships with each other. And student mental health needs to stay a priority. It was a priority actually before the pandemic, but now more than ever, it's harder for families to access mental health services. And the school is a place that can help bridge that gap. I think we have to focus also for the students on curriculum to make sure they feel represented. And that what they're offered in our school keeps them up to date with technology and their learning has to be just state of the art. The other thing is that we have to keep our eye in these upcoming years on staffing. There is a crisis in staffing of schools right now. And we have to maintain a continuing dialogue with our teachers, with our ESPs, with our administrators to make sure that we have what we need moving forward. And then finally, the high school.
Okay, your, your time is up, so you can save it. We're going to go on to our last question. And I just want everybody to kind of think about this one. What do you think is the biggest issue currently facing East Brunswick Public Schools? If elected, and here's the question, what steps would you take to address it? So give us your biggest concern facing East Brunswick Public Schools and then the steps you would take to face those issues. And Mr. Schmidt, it's your turn to start. And Mr. Schmidt, it's your turn to start.
All right. The biggest concern I'm hearing about is that it's some of this, is people, it's just a general theme with nation also, people not coming together and trying to work together and caring about each other and just fighting and, and the, there's also a epidemic of loneliness, loneliness people are talking about, I've heard mentioned a number of times, there's all these things about that going on. And kids need to be, they need the nurturing, they need to feel part of a group, the community. How exactly do I plan to do it? I have actually been thinking about it and I'm still thinking about it. I just don't have a clear answer to that yet. That seems to be something which seems to be a direction that needs, there are some thoughts like, when I was a kid, for example, I heard all this stuff about, about Islam and Palestinians and stuff like that. And then as an adult, through the mental free movement, I met somebody who was actually Palestinian and we were discussing stuff and he taught me quite a bit about, for example, that the, there's all discussion about once, once a phrase in the Quran, what, and jihadists take it one way and other people take it another way in a more peaceful way. And there's all these discussions about, there's sometimes just communication between people, having people talk, having other people come in. There was a, the, East Brunswick did a Ramadan thing where people, somebody spoke about Ramadan. I unfortunately missed that because I hear about all this stuff after it happens. But I would have loved to learn more about Ramadan. I've been in Israel when Ramadan has happened, I, and I don't really know very much about it, but it'd be nice to actually know something more about Ramadan. That's the thing. One thought is maybe have speakers from different cultures come in to try to talk about different cultures, maybe as a school program or something.
Okay. I'm going to cut you off there. That's good, good start on that one. Okay, Mr. Spielman.
Can you read the question one more?
Sure. What do you think is the biggest issue currently facing East Brunswick Public Schools? If elected, if elected, what steps would you take to address it?
Well, I think this kind of goes over a question that we covered earlier, which is, has to do with the ESPs and with transportation and stuff like that. I think that is the biggest concern. The one thing that I know about children growing up is that they like to have some type of consistency, whether it's in the household, whether it's in the school, having that consistency is a necessity. It makes them being able to feel calm and collected and they're able to learn effectively and explore those thoughts without having to worry about something being out of place. So I think that is my biggest concern and I think that is the biggest concern we need to address. As to how to deal with those things, I think one of the steps we need to do is, you know, well, as I mentioned before, we need, we need, and Mr. Sizmore mentioned before, we need to focus on the ESPs and provide them the necessary resources, give them a pay raise if that works, providing competition for those positions from the pain of the privatization, provide the competition and incentives for our drivers and other support staff of that and the transportation department and really realize that this is a community, all right? If one thing falls, everything falls in itself, you know? One thing is not by itself. These are all themselves keystones for separate things and they build upon a larger community. So if we disregard this major thing, everything that we cherish at this point just may go up in smokes and we have to focus on this diligently.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Hong.
So being a school board is not easy job. I have, I already have six years' experience. So East Brunswick Public School is facing all kinds of challenges such as staff shortage, special education, increased enrollment. So if I have to choose the biggest issue, I will say is the new high school. Building a new high school is not just school board's decision, it's a community decision because we have to go to the referendum. That is the future, future of East Brunswick. By who makes this decision? It's East Brunswick community, community, not just nine elected board member. But as a board member, I will, if elected, I, I'm willing to talk everyone, explaining the need, the urgency, and how can we build it, even with the, I have been talking to the retirees, they worry about the property tax increase. I said, when you, at the time you decide to leave, if nobody coming to take your house, what can you expect? The property price will drop. You are going to lose your lifetime saving. The only way to save your lifetime saving is to build good public school, attracting more people to new, to this community, having people to bid for your property.
Thank you, Mr. Hong. Thank you. Okay. And Ms. Gouz.
I would agree that the largest issue facing the board right now are our aging facilities, the high school being right now paramount, but not just the high school. I think that we have an extraordinary staff and we have a fantastic group of students and supportive parents, but the buildings are aging and it's difficult because the board is really bound by how much we're able to plan to spend on these large projects. But we do need to keep, I think in the upcoming years, a real focus on our vision for how we're going to handle each of the aging facilities. There is an inequity. Memorial's a beautiful building. My, my own children got to go through the building years of being in another building while it was coming up and then getting to go there. And I think we're in a unique position right now. The high school has to be a priority. We have an extremely talented administrative team and I've been in schools for 31 years and I've never seen anything quite like it. So when we start to look at a high school, we need to involve all stakeholders. We need to really look at a four-year comprehensive high school and what that could offer the children. What can the high school offer the community? It's a hub for the community, obviously. What can the high school give back to the community? And how can we build a facility that supports itself in some ways? Hammer Shield's an excellent example. The JM PAC creates a great deal of revenue for the district to ease the taxpayers' burden. So I think actually having a plan and a purpose for the high school is a really strong opportunity this year.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Sizmore.
Obviously, safety's number one, but I'm going to, I'm going to go off on a different level here. I agree with some of the other members up here. It's facilities. You know, we need a true assessment, like I said, about the demographic studies to see what future trends are. Classroom space, based on the type of class, not the square footage. We can't have huge class sizes. Effective learning doesn't occur with too many kids in one classroom. As great as our staff is, I think they would agree on that. And again, it's based on true data, not guessing. Yes, I agree with the new high school, but district-wide, I think we need a demographic study and like I said, a true assessment of what the classroom space is used for to find out where other needs may be. I agree with Mr. Hong. People come here for the great schools, like I said, and to be safe. Your home values do go up because of the great educational system we have here in East Brunswick Township. I've seen it, what you could buy a house for here in 1964 and, you know, where a house goes today. So that's the financial side of it. Invest in our staff. They are the best. And go Bears.
Okay. All right. So you've finished your round of questions. We're coming to the end and at this point, you are each going to have two minutes to close out and kind of clear up anything you want the viewer or the community to know about you and why you're running. So we're going to begin with you, Mr. Spielman, to start off the closing.
Well, I just want to say thank you to the NJEA pride committee for hosting the event. I want to thank our audience, once again, both here and watching. I hope I was able to provide the information that was necessary for your decision come November. My major focus really, at the end of the day, is to have somebody who has gone through this school system and at the same time, see what other things are, are really, really hitting us. Because if you're in a vacuum, you're only going to see one particular perspective. I hope that I would be able to provide a perspective that may be different. It may, I may be considered unorthodox, I may be considered controversial in some cases. But I think at the end of the day, having that person there that may be like that is sometimes good because you get, you get comfortable. And when you get comfortable at the same time, it can be, you'll make mistakes because you're just so used to that comfort that went to, in an uncomfortable situation, you're not able to operate. So I, hopefully I can do that. That's my focus right there. The other thing I wasn't able to mention before, but I definitely do when we were talking about privatization, is that I would love to see a child nutrition team once again in-house because we used to have that and I, I think that that, once again, would bring back the consistency as I mentioned before. So with all those things considered, once again, thank you. I appreciate the time and that I've had here and hope to get your vote come November. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hong.
So again, thank you Dr. Zambiki and EBEA for the opportunity meeting East Brunswick voters in person or virtually. For last six years, I diligently discharge my duty as Board of Education members and I'm very proud that I attend almost every single meeting. I read all the document and I cast my vote for the best interest of East Brunswick children. Still, it takes a combined effort of school administrators, teachers, students, parents, and Board of Education members to build a wonderful school district. As EB, as EB voters, you should come, choose the best person for this most important volunteer position. This position is not paid, okay? Because East Brunswick Public School is not just the largest employer in town, is the foundation of this community, is the future of East Brunswick Township. Therefore, for the best future of East Brunswick, please come out and vote. Please vote for me because I have proved, proved myself in last six years and I will not fail you in next three years. And one more comment for question number five, is the curricular committee chairperson, I encourage and I advocate more teachers, more administrators to the curricular committee meetings. That's why for most of the committee, curricular committee meetings, we have 40-plus, even 50-plus attendees. By that way, we can know what's the really ideas from our teacher, they have firsthand experience. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Gouz.
I had someone say to me, when I first got onto the board, they said, you know, you talk about education a lot and you don't talk about yourself that much, so I would like to talk about myself for just a moment because everyone appear is passionate about this. So who do you pick and why? I think I'm kind of offering a unique merging of different points of view at the moment. I, I realized this year on the first day of school, and here's just where I tip my age, but I realized on the first day of school this year that this was my 50th consecutive first day of school. My entire life goes on that ebb and flow of first day of school to graduation every year and education is just center to who I am. So besides being a teacher and besides living in schools, which is my great joy, I also have three children that are part of this educational system. I have a four and a half-year-old who cannot wait to go to Memorial, like it's a big deal. She really would like to be there. And then I have a sophomore and a senior and I feel like it gives me such a unique perspective, you know? I'm on the playgrounds and I'm talking to parents there and I'm at Heavenly Farms and I'm at Little Teeny Tiny People Soccer, where I see Liwu. I'm talking to parents there about what their kids need and what their kids are enjoying and what's helping them. And then I'm at the high school and still at Churchill occasionally, but I'm at the high school so much and there, talking to teachers and parents and really enjoying our deep roots in the community and our deep roots in the school. I think with my background in educational administration, this lifelong commitment to education and community service, plus my insight as a parent, I think I have a lot to offer to the Board of Education and I hope to get your vote in November. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sizmore.
I've said it before, you all know it, my focus is on safety. I'm grateful for the past four years that the voters in East Brunswick have relied on me in that capacity. I'm asking for three more. There's a lot that goes on behind the scenes that I can't talk about to keep our students, staff, parents, visitors safe. This also includes focusing on the mental health of our students and our administration has done an outstanding job in that and the board has supported those efforts. I watch spending. You know, we're going to deliver a great school district here, but I keep an eye on frivolous costs. You'll see me asking questions. I've said it before, don't get your information from a social media post that's sometimes jaded, okay? Parents, come to a board meeting. You can watch me work. Speak to your teachers and principals, learn what's going on at your school. I've always stressed transparency and included all stakeholders involved in any decision we're making. My investment would be in career-long employees. I've spoken about that. I didn't get to talk about it before because it didn't come up, but I think we should promote from within. I've seen the quality of our teachers and staff and I prefer if we can find people that are already here to make them lifelong East Brunswick employees. I want to thank the East Brunswick Education Association Pride Committee for hosting this important event. Thank to all, thank you to all those that came out in the rain tonight to be here. Thanks to all those watching at home. You know, your local elections are probably the most important vote you're going to do. So please, help me to continue my work here to serve our district by voting for me, Mark Sizmore, on November 8th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sizmore. And Mr. Schmidt.
I'd like to thank NJEA for hosting this and all the support staff that was involved who I don't even know about, like for example, who set up the table and stuff. And I know you have to say, because everyone says it, you know, it's not, but there is a concept that some people should have, recognize, have gratitude and recognize the goodness some people have done. It's a very important concept in general. I'd like to go back to the discussion about the building. So I was saying last year, the meet the candidates, so Ms. Duenst had mentioned about if you have a good build, if they have a more recently built building, then maybe we should talk about, instead of building one to go and just add on. On the other hand, Mrs. Gouz, I hope I pronounced that correctly, had a good point also, if it's bad, you just have to tear it down. I have been working in houses that are 100 years old, they're in wonderful condition and I've been working in houses that were built a couple of years ago that are falling apart. It's not as simple as, it's, it's more complicated than just to say that it's, has to be torn down because of age or not. You have to actually see the details about it. Usually the difference is maintenance is a very big important factor. The houses from 100 years ago, they're in really good condition, they've had good maintenance over the years and that can make a big difference versus poor maintenance and also the building of the structure, you know? If, how was it originally built is also important. How well was it designed? Or how well was the workers actually built it? Or different systems is there? For example, I heard that there, that a number of years ago, people were told in the high schools not to drink the water there because of lead contamination. I don't know very much about what happened with that, but if you have to replace all the pipes in the wall and you have to look at the utility drawing, if you have utility drawing for the old one and you have the exact details of everything, you have to tear down most of the concrete to get to all the utility stuff, then you're basically tearing it down anyway. It makes more sense. On the other hand, if it's only specific spots, it's quite a, or if they left in the original design the ability to access things, like an access area, then maybe you don't have to tear it down. It's quite a complicated aspect. And I also want to talk about the scientific method discussion. I know I'm almost up, but there's, scientific method is actually the main thing, science has to be based on, your discussion about how things work.
Your time is up.
Well, it's, it's based on scientific method. It has to be the way it's done. The, that's one thing.
We'll give you one last second to just say goodnight.
There's all, sign, there's also, there is, scientific method is a communal understanding of trial and error. That's how I see it. So just like that, that's what the actual curriculum has to be based on, how that works. When I was, one time I got a tour.
I'm going to have to cut you off because we can wait over.
Can I just say a thing about the Herzog Institute quickly?
Quick. One sec.
All right.
Go ahead.
I got a tour once of, I think it was the Herzog Institute in, in Havia in Israel once and there was a scientist there who was doing research on the sun and I actually was wondering like, how do we know the composition of the sun? How do we know what's in there? And he actually went for me, explained to me all the experience that they started centuries ago until they got to how they figured out what exactly is there. That made a very big impression to me about how science actually works.
Okay. I'm going to have to cut you off, but thank you.
That's basically what I was saying.
All right. Thank you very much. On behalf of the East Brunswick Education Association, I would like to thank all of you for your time and commitment. I'd like to congratulate you on your decision to run, to make sure that we have the best public schools in East Brunswick and we wish you best on November 8th. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.